Yeah, I was gonna add that to that. So we should probably change the information.
Okay, we'll call and order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council from Monday, August 27th. Pleasure, Leader.
...of the United States of America, and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice of all.
It's during.
My name's Pastor Thor, and I'm here today. It's an honor to pray for the leadership of our community. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we pray that as the leaders of our community come together, that you would bless them with wisdom and guidance beyond their own ability. God, we pray for the city of Tracy, and we pray that we continue to be a city where we're thankful for our blessings, and a city where we work together in unity to help each other in times of need. And we pray, Lord, that every decision that needs to be made would be made with careful thought and with compassion for the people who live here. And we just thank you for this time tonight, and we pray that everything that will be done would honor your holy name. Amen.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have approval of the minutes as they're written?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes so we can enter discussion.
Second.
First and second, all those. Oh, wait, any discussion?
Yep. On the special minutes from August 20th. My understanding that we're gonna purchase two replacement grass rigs for $58,944 each. And I don't see that in the minutes that way. It looks, the minutes read like we're gonna get 'em both for that $59,000. So we can just add the word "each" on that for clarity.
Add "each" after $58,944?
Yep.
Okay.
Close corrections. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And we have approval of the agenda. Do we have any?
Nothing to add.
Wow.
Are you impressed?
Yeah.
Oh, if you wanna make the...
I wanna make a change.
Okay.
For the closed meeting, it says for the liquor store. I'd like us to have a closed meeting to continue discussion of the EDA position after the off, you know, the decisions from the last one.
Oh, so two subjects in a closed meeting.
Well, no, they won't, well, we're gonna postpone the liquor store one to the September 24th. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
But then I'd still like to have a closed meeting concerning the EDA position for city employment.
So replace B essentially. I'm good with that. I'd make a motion to second that, or second your motion. Sorry.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Does anybody have any ident conflicts of interest tonight? Hearing none, we will go to, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda? Okay. We'll go into reports from the department heads.
I'll take over, Val. She wasn't, she was ill today, so I did talk to her a little bit. The asbestos removal got done last week, so that's good. Bids will be, the bid process will be started for some of the basement improvements. They have, I got writing groups going on in the library she talked about, and some lap time, story time stuff. That was about it. She probably had better explanations of all that, but she called this morning, so...
Did she say she has anything special going on for Boxcar Day? Did they do anything?
She didn't say anything to me.
Okay. Jason, wanna be next?
I'll take any questions you have about the activity report first, if you have any. Other than that, things are going well. Seem to be getting caught up with all their flood paperwork and stuff going on with that. That seems to be winding down a little bit more, so we can get back to normal business. And close, the email I got with my packet talking about squad purchase for 2019, which is scheduled to be replaced anyways in 2019. The memo that we got from Ford Motor Company was that they're taking, you have to order them before September 21st if you want a 2019 model and the configurations that they have set up. They're apparently regrouping to make everything hybrids for 2020, so they're only taking orders up until that date. So if you want me to get some bids before next council for that, I can do that. Otherwise, I kinda listed what Brant told me, what other things are going for in the memo, and just thought I'd throw that out for concerns. We're scheduled to replace in 2019 anyways. Ultimately, I would like to have a 2019 SUV interceptor, just because I've always wanted to have two squads that looked identical, had all the identical equipment in the same identical places, just for ease. And now it sounds like, that probably won't be something we'll be able to continue with if they're gonna change the configuration of the vehicles coming up, so. We've never had that, 'cause we've always had one Dodge and one Chevy, or one Chevy and one Ford, or, you know, this is our opportunity to actually have that for four years, the way the squads are staggered, so, if we did order that way. But, thought I'd throw that out, see if it's some...
It's in your budget.
Yep, it's already budgeted.
Why not get the calls? And bring it to us.
So, sounds like Brainard has a state bid this year, and then last year we got, or last time, when we got the 17, we got it through Redwood, so I'll give them the opportunity and see what they, usually they either beat it or match it, so it's closer, so. Any questions about that? Take that as direction. Thanks. Anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you. Do we gotta wait for a hand, or can you come?
Can you say do yours next?
I'm usually last. Actually, Chris is usually last, but I'm, do it if you want me to. Don't matter.
Guess I'm not really sure what you want for a report tonight. If we wanted to talk about the resolutions, I didn't see on the agenda for the hazard properties. Not sure if that's supposed to be happening this evening. And, so if we wanted to discuss that during the department report, or if you want me to stick around for that later. Fire call wise, starting to level out a little bit after the flood. We are pretty well caught up on a lot of our paperwork, other than the hazardous house, hazardous houses. We met with the insurance company the other day. I can get you something in writing at the next council meeting, I guess, as to how we're sitting on all that stuff, unless you want me to shoot over it verbally here. And the only other thing I have is I did get a solid number on the pump truck, actually about an hour ago, that we've talked about a couple different times, so. What would you like to start with, or do you have the resolutions on there for tonight?
Yep.
You want me just to wait for later to discuss?
Yeah, they're on the schedule.
Okay. Was the fire truck on the schedule, or were doing that during department head?
Nope, department head.
Okay, so fire truck, which again, now you've already blessed us twice, but just so you know, $362,987 was our source well price. I asked the guy today, just 'cause we had asked, he figured it would've been probably $20,000 more, just as a regular bid, so the source well option saved us $20,000 and a lot of headaches. So, that's where that's at. I really don't think we need approval for it, but just so you guys know what the final dollar came in. And other than that, the insurance stuff, I can supply at the next meeting in writing what we got. So, versus talking about it, you can actually see it. Any questions for anything fire department related? What's up?
You've come forward enough, thank you.
I'll be back in a little bit.
Chris, do anything for us, or you wanna wait until?
I just have the resolution for Reiner. Make go over it now if you want.
I think it's on the agenda, that one. That's on 12B for that.
I know, we must have...
You want to do it now?
No, the department heads first.
Okay.
All right, I got a few things for you tonight. Four things. First thing is, I just wanna give you an update on the Broad Acres property. The EDA now owns that whole block, where that number 29 Spruce Street is and number 909 Center Street. So the asbestos is taken off of, the only piece of the asbestos was on the garage. That has been taken off and disposed of correctly. Now we are ready to demolish, burn, whatever we're planning on doing with those, and then we'll be moving on to getting the ground ready and getting it ready for construction. So we have, I would call it a list of people that have already expressed interest in coming out there and doing some things. We just gotta get all the logistics part of it back. Chris met a new one today that came in and seen the ad in the peach, and comes in and didn't bat an eye at the price that we were looking at, too. So, so that's good, that's a little bit more to come with that. Next thing I've got for you is, I'm gonna put it on the agenda, I'm gonna try to put it on the agenda, probably for the 10th. I've got United Community Action. Jeff Gladus will be coming, would like to approach the city council in two weeks to talk about the Small Cities Grant that he would like to write up for us. He's got some, few different plans that we could possibly do, but whether we write it up and get approved for it this year, he thinks that if we apply for it this year, then even if we don't get it this next year, we will get it the year after that, right away, which would be a lot of money for the housing, which is where we're struggling the most here in Tracy with housing. So I'll, dealing with United Community Action, I'd also like to make sure everybody knows they're gonna be getting a survey in the mail in the next two weeks. Please fill out that survey and send it in. It goes to a secure location. It doesn't come back to the EDA office or the city office. It goes right to Marshall, to the UCAP office, and that is gonna be just the first part of the application process to the Small Cities Grant. So we need people to fill those out. We need as many people, even if you're not going to apply for one of them, please fill it out and send it back in. So I wanted to make that announcement. Next piece of housing is tomorrow, most of the morning, I've got a meeting in Worthington at the USDA office. I called those, actually, Chris gave me a number, and I called the USDA for Minnesota, and then, and then they got me to the Worthington office, and they are actually gonna write up a program for the city of Tracy tomorrow. For a number of, and I would say good-sized loans and grants, there's gonna be some criteria that goes along with it. Over the age of 62, there are some grants available, and, you know, again, there's criteria that's needed to be hit, but then there's also going to be, I can't say how much money that's gonna come forward through the USDA, but I am, as of right now, I'm the only one, the city of Tracy's the only one that's got this private meeting with them tomorrow. But they're gonna write up a plan for what they can do with, from what I heard so far is some 1% interest. They gave me one example I'd like to give, would be a $20,000 loan to redo your house, whether it's the basement, or it's the siding, or whether it's the roof, or whatever it's needed. And with that loan, it's at 1%, so you're over a 20-year span, so your payment would be $92 a month for 20 years. Very, very reasonable at 1%. So we got some good things going with the housing, those first three with housing. Last thing that I got for you, I just wanna give one of these out to everybody. It's something that we went over with the EDA. These are gonna be hanging up all over town. I would like, if you'd like more of them, you can hang it up in Marshall, please. But if you want three or four more of these to hang up, and you place the business or wherever else, I have 20 copies of the large ones, and then I've got some eight by 11 and some five by eight. These are also some business cards that I'll be handing out throughout the Boxcar Days events, and from here on out, it was the same thing. It just has my Facebook page on it, and then also talks about the $5,000 business reward. I know you've all seen that. You got any questions on, anything about that $5,000 business reward? It's something that, I'm looking at the confused look on your face.
What is it?
Well, you know, we wanna, we wanna generate...
Wait, Jeff?
We'd like to generate some conversations amongst people, not only at Boxcar Days, when people come back, but I'd like, you know, some of these to be hung up in Marshall. If somebody brings us a business into town, and they create jobs, build a new building, or refurbish a consistent, or an existing business or building, and then also get onto the tax rolls, then the EDA will give a check for $5,000 to that person. There's some criteria that goes with it, like I just talked about, has to be EDA approved, but it's, you know, if this brings in one business that'll, you know, have five employees, five full-time employees, and bring a tax base, you know, with maybe a $150,000, $200,000 new building, something to that effect, so. So there, and I have all kinds of those posters. I'd like them hanging up all over town, and I'm gonna be going up and down the Highway 14 and on Main Street here on Wednesday and Thursday, hanging those up. So everybody that comes to town this whole weekend will see them. I also have can koozies for the beer tent that will be available, 500 of them.
Tall ones for the big son?
No. Man, you're tough. Any questions on anything?
I'm gonna backpedal a little bit to USDA meeting. Is that flood-related, or is that something entirely different from that?
It is, they would like to make it flood-related.
Okay.
There's always the USDA, there's hanging up in all the hallways I put up, where there's the tear-off pads, but they would like to put something together that would really help a city that's in need. And when I told them about the 406 homes damaged out of 900, they're bringing somebody in from Minneapolis, somebody from Fairmont. I have a meeting with five people tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
I just wanna get that clarified, that was flood-related primarily, and go from there.
But it doesn't absolutely have to be. There's USDA loans out there that, there's always criteria that go along with it. I'm trying to work with them on, to hopefully ease up on the criteria a little bit. I'll know more about that. I've already talked to Seth. We're gonna put it in the newspaper when it's time, and when we know what we're gonna, that's what they're gonna help me with, is some of the marketing of this. They'd like to market it through the radio and through newspaper ads, which they are taking care of. I'll know more about that tomorrow when I get back. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Shane, you wanna go?
I suppose I can here. Uh, let's see. Done a lot of follow-up from the flood. Worked on a lot of equipment, going through everything, make sure there's no water in where it doesn't belong. We did a little bit of trimming and cleaning up trees, kinda focused on the parade route for now. Hoping to get some more boulevard trees maybe trimmed here this fall, but kinda doing whatever we can, make sure everything's good for Labor Day weekend. Talked to Dunick's today a little bit about the airport. They're still not 100% sure if they'll have millings available, but I kinda told them we wanted them for possible resolution for that west side of the hangar base, so waiting to hear on that. It just kinda depends on if they chunk it out, or if they fine mill it, so I guess it depends on the cost of mobilization there, so. Other than that, right now, we're just trying to get everything boxcar-related this week, and we did get all those services rerouted that needed to get done, so Dunick's will actually be coming, they're planning Friday, kinda warned them about Boxcar Days, but if not Friday, it'd be Tuesday for sure, but they're not waiting on us now, so. Any other questions?
Are we still gonna fence off around the old Anderson building for this weekend?
I think we're gonna just try to secure some of the boards that are there.
Okay.
The stringers above it are still pretty solid. We looked at it, and he's gonna bring a nail gun down and just nail it up. Yep, just to keep it from falling.
Great.
It's the most effective.
I'd just like to say thanks again, Shane, for doing the legwork and getting those services connected.
It's kinda nice moving forward now, so.
Yeah, it's Chris.
I'll do the municipal liquor store first. You got that. It was, sales were down about $7,000 from 2017. I think that a lot of that can be attributed, that's the July numbers, a lot can be attributed to July 4th being a big day and it not being a big day here this year. Everybody's cleaning their basements. They probably wanted a beer, but they didn't have time to go and get it. She did want to ask the council about being open on Sunday of, during Boxcar Days. She'd like to be open 11 to 6, but closed for the parade on Monday. On Sunday, she'd like to be open 11 to 4. If the council doesn't have a problem with that, can prove it.
And we've always, in the past, just left that to her discretion, so if that works in her world, we're good.
Yep, she wants to do it. Do it by consensus, yeah.
Okay. Any questions on liquor store? Okay, from my office, lots of meetings, a lot of flood-related stuff still. Long-term recovery is something. We voted on the last meeting to fund for the startup of it. Meetings with the EDA, UCAP, Minvo ads, on the UCAP stuff with Jeff. There's a lot of stuff coming from USDA on some stuff for helping, and they're converting a lot of stuff over to apply it more flood-related to us, and I think that's where he's gonna have some power with them as far as maybe limiting some of the criteria, like he said. That's gonna be good. I met with the city admins of Marshall and Cottonwood, and we just talked together about some things, and they had some strong questions about EDA and some stuff about mitigation stuff with flood stuff. Planning commission, we had a couple with that. We're talking about street and sidewalk widths. That's gonna, something that's gonna move to the planning commission. The Mark happened here last. That was very successful. The Red Cross was extremely happy about that. They wanted to thank the city for allowing us to use their facilities, so that worked out really good. A lot of good information came out of that. Some staff members are doing MinLars, airport outreach, multi-agency recovery. Again, that was the day that it actually happened. Working forward, we're gonna, we're working on the budget. Got a lot of the expenditure stuff done on it, working on some of the investment stuffs, trying to dial it in, Shane's actually helping quite a bit on it, dialing that in so that it's not, it's just not so high this year, and get that down initially, so we don't have to play volleyball with it and pass it back and forth. The primary election went seamlessly. Diane did a great job on that. She put a lot of effort into that. Flood, so FEMA, HSEM, and SBA were here. They did their PDA visit, talked to multiple homeowners and such. We, there are some things that we are gonna qualify for. This is stuff that's gonna come forward. There are going to be some benefits that are gonna come to the citizens of Tracy. There, that's yet to be announced, but we did qualify for some of the things, and that's gonna activate some federal programs and some state-level programs. So the efforts of the fire department going door-to-door, and Chief Lick D documenting everything definitely worked. So I gotta commend them on the efforts they put into all that, 'cause I know you don't see it on a day-to-day basis, but the amount of work they put into it is unbelievable. Some upcoming stuff, we have an LMC liability audit that was started with the ADA survey that we did, and there's some stuff that I gotta go through with that flood-related, and then the hazardous properties. So we're still working on the aid part of it. There are some volunteer organizations that are still coming to town. Chief Lick D's working on that, and that's going well. Any questions?
All right, can we move to the males? Do you want to move into the budget part?
Sure. So I kinda covered it in my report, I guess, but working through the expenditure part of itself, we've got two council meetings. The next meeting will be presented with the preliminary budget, and I'll tell Seth if you want to make any adjustments to it and such. Of all the places in the world, I'm working with the Minnesota Rural Water Association. They've got a consultant that's helping with, on some of this stuff. I touched base on the utility stuff, and it ended up getting some advisory stuff on the budgetary stuff. Yeah, my goal on the budget is obviously to get the, any levy, if any levy, as low as we can, and I wanna get into that right away, instead of proposing a large budget immediately and then trying to trim where we need to. And the department heads all did a good job on saying they'll be fiscal next year, so. That's it.
Okay, so Drew, you're up next. Drew, you have two.
Good evening. I'm not sure where, where do you want me to start here? I'll just start with, Nicole and I bought our property out behind the Dollar General in, I think it was 99. Built our house in 2000, and we had roughly 25 acres out there at the time. We separated that off with our house, which is on probably three acres, and then Dollar General contacted us about buying some property there, and at that time, excuse me, I'll back it up a little bit. In 2004, the city asked if we were interested in giving them an easement to go from the corner of Highway 14 to the corner of the dump road. They wanted to put a power line in there so they could put a security camera up in. So, yeah, I'm here to work with you guys, and sure. So they did that, and anyways, the Dollar General come along, and they built that fence behind, between us and Dollar General, and that was supposed to be the property line, they said, and so we thought, okay, that's perfect. We got that city's easement there, whatever, now they got ground from there to the tree dump, and it's all good to go. July of last year, I get a letter from Madonna saying that after further review, that we own the tree dump road, all the way up to the crick, where the, well, we took that fence line and shot it straight west. That's where our property is, and that's where it ends. If you look at the Geo Moose, which isn't exact, but it's pretty darn close, that's where, we're to the west side of the tree dump, is what they're telling us. So, they, we, I wanna check, make sure there was no easements in the past on that, so I went to Marshall, talked to EJ Moberg. They sent me to the register. I talked to the gal there, and she went back into the 1940s, and there wasn't any easements on that, which I didn't think there could be, because we got, we just got our first tax statement on that piece of ground this year. So we're paying taxes on that ground, and, I don't know. Basically, what I'm trying to get to is, Nicole and I and our family, we don't like, we don't wanna... Basically, what I'm trying to get to is Nicole and I and our family, we don't wanna own the dump ground, you know, and our, maybe it'll never happen. My fear is you get a wet day, somebody overloads their truck, comes hauling down that road, and that's not in the best shape anyway, and then smokes a tree, and then we're gonna sue the city, and the city don't own it, Nicole and I do, and I don't want any of that liability. And I don't wanna have, I don't wanna pay the taxes on it, I don't want, I really don't want anything to do with it. You guys sold the ground to Angle Keeses, our neighbors, and it's about the same amount of acres and about the same price tag as what they have on their ground. I sold it for, or I was asking $200 more, because that takes care of the taxes for that year, is $198. So, that's why we're, that's why we come up with $5,200. You guys got any questions?
I did research. I called the recorder's office as well. I did dig into it. This letter, nothing was filed off of this from previous administrator. Again, due diligence, I just double-checked, there is nothing going back. We don't have any easement on the property.
And you guys never signed this easement that?
No.
This letter?
Nope, I got the original right here with us, so.
Yeah, if you didn't sign easement and it didn't get recorded, it's dead trees for no good reason.
But with this, with this being said, excuse me just a minute, Tony. I put in there, you guys take care of all the closing costs, 'cause I, I don't wanna deal with that, but I would like to say that, I would like to ask if we could keep hauling branches and stuff out to the tree dump off our property. We do own, we have 400 and some odd feet on Highway 14, and my wife owns a building down here.
I don't think that's an issue. That's me. I mean, you pay your taxes.
I don't think that's an issue.
It's, yeah.
I know, at first, I'm like, why is he asking? Oh, sorry, he's out of town, but it's like, I don't think that's an issue.
I appreciate the homework of both that is, and your both. I was, like I said, under the understanding that there was a signed easement, but that being said, I've got no problem with making a motion to purchase that property for $5,200, and the city take care of it and be done with it.
I'll second it. I mean, we don't have an easement right now, so.
Right.
And it's pretty clear to me that he wouldn't give us one.
I'll pay taxes for you, Kendrick. Somebody said I should put up a coal booth.
You make a lot of money on $5,200.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, we can skip B, right? The request to hold the closed meeting for the liquor store, 'cause we're on that?
I accept you changed it to an EDA.
Is this where you changed it to the EDA?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a motion to go into a closed session at the end of the meeting to discuss EDA's hiring, EDA Director hiring position.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petition, petition for local improvement?
That one there, we're gonna, we're still waiting on signatures, so we're gonna table that to the next meeting. Not a goal for the, the irregularity and appeal for the upcoming agenda item, too. Those two are still waiting for signatures, just later in the meeting. The, let me look.
The Weaver appeal for special assessments. Those two piggyback on another.
They want table 10C and D, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Then we'll move on to legal issues, the easement of 324 South Street.
This is the easement, as discussed previously with Ms. Martin, for the changing it to making it a little more specific for our use as an alley, and then we're gonna put the curb, you actually already, you approved the deal. This is the easement that carries on with it, so if you approve that, I'll give her a copy of it, and we'll.
File it.
Sign it, file it.
The key part of it all.
So, I'll give it to you afterwards if you guys approve this.
I'd make a motion to approve that easement.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, how about the update on 157 Third Street?
So, City Attorney Matt Gross got a letter from First National Acceptance Company with, stating that this property has actually been quitclaim deed to a person who, further research, we can't find. It's not my place to say whether that person exists or not, but it, it didn't seem that I was able to find that person, and, so, the, the procedure for that is to serve that person the paperwork as well, with the address they provided. So, the city attorney has done that. He's drafted that and sent that off. He did serve First National Acceptance Company, the, the notice of that they're still on the hook, so to speak, because it is filed with the Lyon County Recorder's Office, that First National Acceptance Company still owns it. It's up to them to get it out of their name. With that, it'll take, paying some of the back taxes, so they'll have something invested into doing it, whether they do that or not. He said that as long as it stays in their name, they'll still be liable for any raising costs and such like that. It could be split, it, you know, depends on how, how the legal action would go, but the, the procedure is to name the other party. So, that's where we're at. It adds a little bit of time to what we've done, 'cause the two weeks that, or the week and a half that we had with First National Acceptance, that'll delay it, because the time will now start over with serving the papers to who they have named in the quitclaim deed. He served them, he actually had the sheriff in Ingram County, I think it was, served them directly, and we got a receipt for that and everything, the papers telling, requesting them to either accept ownership or file the quitclaim deed. So, the update is it's gonna delay, just, the update is it's not.
How about we're moving on?
It just basically add two weeks, then we start the legal side for raising it, or?
Yes.
The clock.
The clock, yep. Any questions on that?
Keep going forward.
Okay, resolution 2018-43, allowing part-time police officers to be accepted as members of the public employee, is that right, employee, police and fire?
Yeah, that's for their police and fire plan, the para, or their retirement stuff. So, we have a police officer, the part-time, that's been hired, Nathan Holden, we need to pass a resolution to.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2018-43.
I'll second. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2018-44, approving payment to Reiner Construction, our contracting for work completed on stipulation.
Yes, the version that was included in your packet included payment for, so the contractor fills out the application for payment, and we review it. Usually, we get it earlier in the week before a council meeting. Reiner's had some turnover with their project managers. Their project manager left, and the new guy's kinda getting up to speed, so we didn't get it until Thursday, and we had a little discrepancy on one of the items that is paid by unit price. So, I believe this one was the, the one with my chicken scratch on there with the revised numbers. We didn't have a chance to come to a resolution. We just said, hey, we're, we're getting a little bit different number than you submitted. We'd like to, one of us has a discrepancy here, and we haven't had a chance to get together to talk about it, so we're just basically cutting that out of this pay app, and we'll hopefully have it resolved by the next one. So, all these handwritten numbers are what it'll be changed to, and we'll, we'll get you an updated application, you know, typed out and signed and everything, but, so the, the amount to be paid if approved would be $487,455 and 75 cents. And then if you wanted to approve it contingent upon the paperwork getting caught up and signed and everything, that would be, that way they don't have to pay two weeks, or wait another two weeks. It's a pretty big amount for them to carry, but it's your, your call.
Basically, on the left side, you removed change order one and change order two, both, correct?
Uh, no, those are, that's the contract amount.
Oh, okay.
Not the, it's the amount completed was reduced, starting on line four, and then that, all those numbers carry through. So, it was the number for.
Oh, yeah.
Something on their pay estimate.
Yeah.
And then that one'll just be added to the next payout?
Right.
I would make a motion to approve resolution 2018-44, and the amount of 47, 455, 75, to be signed when the resolution is tight.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
How they doing out there? Are they shot back up, or?
Yeah, I think I was last out there three, maybe four weeks ago, and I was amazed. You should drive out there sometimes. They look like ponds now. You can see it from the road.
Right, they're bad as shit.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they're not holding water, but I mean, it's actually shaped and to a basin that, you know, was designed, and they started on the north end, so if you ever drove by before, you couldn't even see to the other end.
Dude, I'd drive by, and I'm like, I cannot figure out what they're doing.
Right, right, but yeah, they make a lot of, it's still gonna be tight at the end of the year, because they have to get these water balance tests done before freeze-up. So, we'll see how that goes. Hopefully, we don't have any weather that's, that's too rough on them, but, yeah, they're really moving now.
Okay.
All right.
Chris.
Thank you.
We have a motion for the municipal accounts payable.
I'll make it. I'll do the mu. Motion for the municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage, the municipal accounts receivable, the charter minutes from July 25th, and the MPC minutes from June 18th.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, with breakthrough beverage?
Make a motion to approve accounts payable with breakthrough, breakthrough beverage.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business? Still unfinished.
In consent calendar, you have Bravo, Charlie, and Delta municipal accounts payable, charter minutes, and MPC minutes?
I did that all first.
Oh, you did all in one, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I wrap it up since I'm not allowed in the second.
He just likes to monk phone.
So, effective. In your packet, you got the qual, or I'm sorry, did you say to utility rate discussion?
Yep.
Okay. In your packet, you got that quality on tap handout. That is that utility rate calculator. What we ended up with was a rate at the bottom, if you see, just to explain, the stuff that really makes sense, this is all out of 2018 budgeted numbers. What really makes sense here is total expense. That's basically what it costs us to make the water, an estimate. What's it costing us to make the water for 2018? Then, water usage in gallons, this is the forecasted amount based on 2017, where we're at now, and there is some unaccounted-for stuff that's gonna be for fire department and a water main break, then, you know, I mean, just some stuff, and that's actually a really low number, the 0.016. Where you see a column where it says the base rate, that's where we charge, a base charge of $25 per resident. You can see that that scale changes if you add 25%, 50%. They're doing that more if you wanna change people's amount, amount per unit, but in the case that we're at, the base charge seems to kinda work out well, and then people are paying for their usage, and that kinda justifies more, kinda balances out for the snowbirds and the people with high water usage versus low water usage, and most people are, their bills are pretty uniform. You see that we're at 239 on that? That's what it costs us to make our water. Now, that's not the amount as we move forward. It costs us 239 per unit. We're billing 297 per unit, which is pretty low in the markup sense of it for, you know, we're looking at infrastructure projects, we're looking at maintenance of equipment, things like that. You know, the general maintenance stuff is in there, but we're not really, we're not really where we need to be. You had talked about an increase before, there is a definite need for that based on... So, if you, if you go by, we're 297, it's costing us 239. We're only, again, it's not a profit, but we're only moving forward by less than, what is it, 60%?
We're not building up enough reserve to cover the upcoming debt.
Yep.
And just for water.
Just water.
And you could apply the same thing to the sewer.
We can't, because our sewer's based on water charges, so we'll easily be able to do that as well. This is where we're at. You talked about doing a, a potential 2% increase. You know, that would raise us to just three, was it 301 a gallon, or 301 a unit?
Just for the sake of discussion, the, starting with the base charge, do we, do we need to raise the current base charge?
Well, raising the current base charge would definitely add some, you know, on this calculator, you know, I, I can manipulate it any way you want. If you give me some parameters of what you'd like, or I can send it to you directly. It's, any, anybody can take this calculator. It's just inputting all the numbers that I, that I put in the other columns that took the, took the digging.
And the only reason I pose the question, there's definitely a need to raise the unit charge, because we just need to, we're too far behind on that. But I'm wondering if it's worth bumping up to the connection fee or the connection charge, 'cause that's, the, the current base charge, $25 a month, whether you run water through it or not, just to have a meter in your house.
Correct.
So, I'm, I'm fishing here, if anybody thinks it needs, I think, I'll kind of agree that the unit charge has to go up, but I'm just curious about the.
I do, I do agree with you on that.
I'm just curious about the.
The 2% unit charge that you had brought up, I had written out down in my notes that you had brought up last meeting, would make it 303 per unit.
That's not much of a bump, and I don't, I don't remember how much we bumped the.
That's a 2%?
That's 2%.
I don't remember how much we bumped the base charge last time, if that was a 2% too, or not?
That was in my notes from a previous, I think that went up.
I don't know, I think that went up more than 2%.
Yeah.
I think we want that up a dollar value, and then want the units percentage.
Was that 18 before? That sticks in my head for some reason. Do you know the unit charge?
5% rings a bell, but I don't.
Yeah, I didn't have my notes, I didn't dig them out.
I know, our shop bill used to be like 50, now it's like 68, and there's like hardly any water going through there, so it must've been bumped up a lot.
Yeah, it bumped up the base charge and the rate last time. You went, was it 1.5% on the rate?
Well, even if we took it to.
I think you're better off doing.
If we raised it five, like the, the base charge, if we raised it $5, and there's 900 houses, or 900 hook, 900 hookups roughly, that's giving you what, 4,500 bucks a month? 9, 913.
Or do we just raise the unit charge to 350, from 297 to 375, or? Or do we just raise the unit charge to 350 from 297 or 375, or, or, that way the people who are using the water are actually going to be paying.
True.
I agree with that one.
Versus the...
A lot better than the service charge.
Water's going to 350, how much of a percentage jump is that?
My understanding, there'd be no math tonight.
Well, guess what? Things change.
What'd you say, 375?
Just a 350 even. Roughly, what would that be?
About a 16 or something.
Yeah, about 15 and a half percent.
Well, you're good. You work with numbers? So, you're saying just leave the base rate as is, and then just raise the unit charge?
I like that one better.
And do we do the sewer, same across...
I would raise the sewer units the same amount as you do in the water.
Same percentage amount? And then is there another column too? Wasn't there another column, the sewer?
The storm, but we've got a, we've got a flat fee on the storm side.
I think that was, is that $8?
Well, it's on the property taxes.
We also have it on the utility bill, though, away from the storm maintenance. It's one of the charges, one of the surcharges on the water bills for storm sewer.
I, for the sewer surcharge, I have $8, but, you know, I took that right out of the utility rate software, so. It's, it's actually a $6 charge and a $2 charge, but $8 total.
Yeah. 6 was supposed to be dedicated to the...
Storm sewer.
Sort of storm sewer, and yet the 2 was to, from the main to the shut-off.
Yep.
And we just added the shut-off to that, and that last ordinance change. So, it...
Wasn't there a per parcel charge too?
I wish I had brought my notes.
Let's say it was $53,000, spread out over outlook.
For, for the storm, you mean?
Yeah.
I think that was discussed, but I don't know if we...
I thought it was a budgeted line last year. Because, yeah, like, infrastructure replacement reserve, it says for storm sewer levy, it was $53,760.
Yeah, and then divided that out for the 913, for, yeah. That's how it was. And I didn't run the numbers on that to see if that was going to get us where we needed to be when we finish this project, but...
And that was just the start, is all that was, to get something established so we can adjust it from there.
It actually goes, that's it, they're actually occurring.
Yep.
It seems to me, or, and, and talking to Rural Water, you had talked about doing a slow and steady change up until we get the point of when we actually start paying for this project, and we can get some reserves to, to fund the ineligible's or the portions that we're going to be responsible for. Seems like a good start to get you, and we can reevaluate where we're at next year and determine an increase at that point.
Yeah, 53 cents a unit isn't, you know, I use six units a month, so 3 bucks, once you take that by 913 meters, and it adds up fast, so...
It's getting us in the right direction.
Yeah.
We made progress last year, we just need to keep continuing on the same trajectory for it, so...
And the idea is for the water itself to pay for anything moving forward.
Right.
The, the lack of the rates in the past has, you know, you didn't need new water lines, you didn't need to, didn't need to raise the rate.
So, what are we, what's our next step on that? Do we need to...
Well, it'd be an ordinance change, so you're going to have to...
We have to have a public meeting.
You're going to have to have a public hearing, but yeah, first you got to come up with a, need to come up with what we're going to charge. There, if you go with the 350 per unit?
Did we change that in the fee schedule? So, it's a resolution? Or can we do that one differently?
I don't know, we'll have to look at the fee schedule.
I could, I could look into it, but I don't think you need more than a resolution for it.
I thought we made that simpler last time, but I'd have to...
Well, that was the whole purpose of the fee schedule, so I hope, I hope we did.
Yeah.
So, if we raise both of them, the 15 and a half percent, whatever that works out to, and if this come, and I would say, raise it a logical percentage, so it's not, if it's 351 or 349 or whatever, just so it's, it's not 15.596, blah, blah, blah.
Well, you can just make your motion to raise the current per unit charge to $3.50.
And then what?
Backwards your math for your percentage.
How about the sewer, then?
That was, whatever that is.
You know what that is as of today?
The sewer rate? It's $2.86 per unit. So, it's a little bit less than the water is now.
So, do we go to like 340 on that?
That's like a 17% increase.
Going to 340 or...
350 from, for the water part, anyway.
That sounds a lot more than 54 cents. That's where percentages can get you in trouble sometimes.
That's true. So, that's sewer, this is water. So, we can just do the motion this time to get it going? Make a motion to raise the sewer unit charge to 340, and the water unit charge to 350?
I'd second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? I just have a question about that. This goes into effect next year, right?
It would start 2019.
Okay, yeah.
Fee schedule gets updated, be a resolution, update the fee schedule, then.
I'll make a resolution for next week, or for the next meeting. 340 for sewer, 350 for water, correct?
Yep.
And base rates stay the same?
Yep.
I must need two of them, should have one in the agenda.
Chris, you're supposed to print the agenda, Doc.
I have a copy. It's for sale.
Hey, do you want to do the RFP for the city attorney?
Yeah, it was in your packet. If there's any adjustments or anything that you want for that, otherwise I added the few items that were suggested from a few committees and, and from the council itself, and I think, I think it meets all the, all the requests. What I took in my notes, anyway.
I didn't say anything stood out that needed to be changed or something, anything that needed to be added. I think you got it all covered.
If you approve it, I'll publish it.
Okay, so...
I'd make a motion to approve the RFP for legal services.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Any new business?
Hazardous legal resolution.
Yeah, the new business would be the, we have the raising of those properties. Did you want to come up for that, or... It was just the technicality for what you had already done, but they were added to your thing for each property. They, do you want me to list them by address, or do you want me to, they were in your packets, but...
You probably should list them all.
Okay, they are, here, actually.
Do you want to do them one at a time, and then vote on them, or do you want to do them all together and do one vote, vote at the end?
I think we can do them all together.
As long as you do each one.
Actually, they're going to all be a separate resolution, so we have to do them one at a time, right? Okay, first resolution, 2018-45 for the property located at 113 East Morgan Street. This would be identical to the resolution that you did for 157 Third Street. You want me to read the entire legal jargon?
I'd make a motion to approve 2018-45.
Second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Resolution 2846, resolution ordering and raising of a hazardous building located at 124 Elm Street.
I'll make the motion for...
Resolution 2018-46. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Resolution number 2018-47, resolution ordering the raising of a hazardous building located at 249 Union Street.
Make a motion to approve 2018-47.
Second that.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Resolution 2018-48, resolution ordering the raising of a hazardous building located at 349 Sixth Street.
I'll make the motion for resolution 2018-48. I'll second.
First and second, any discussion?
Just a little bit, so the public is aware, we're not just doing these things without any discussion understanding. You've reached out to these property owners, they have not returned any...
In, I guess, in recap, and I was going to do this, I should have probably done this in the beginning, I was going to wait till you were done. In recap, every one of these has been contacted, every one of these has been inspected by myself and Shane. We drafted our statements, they were submitted to the city attorney. He therefore sent us a form to draft, a form he drafted to be edited to each one, that was served to them. The ones that Chief Lipton could physically serve, he served, the ones that we could not serve because they were out of town, were sent registered mail. They were all done with a 30-day, 30-day notice that they had to comply, get back to us, let us know what their intentions were, what their thoughts were, within the 30 days. The process actually explained on the sheet, stated that within the next 30 days, to please submit a plan review, apply for a permit, supply a plan review to the building official at city office with what your intentions to make repair were. These structures here, we have received nothing from. They either failed to pick up the letter, we got the letter back, or they picked the letter up and never responded to us. So, the other ones that were sent, that, there is a list of other ones that we have had correspondence to, I believe we're up to two of them now that are, have intentions of raising the buildings before winter, but they, they are not in this list because they've already, obviously got back with us. So, we have reached out to each and every one of them, they were given a 30-day window. Where we're at now, for some of them, they're well exceeding that 30-day window. What this does is gives them another 30-day window. If we hear nothing from them, we then, in 20 days, move forward and tear it down. We start making arrangements after 20 days after that to tear them down. At this point in time, we don't want to be in the business of tearing down people's houses and assessing it to their taxes.
And they have the opportunity between now and the end of that 30-day period to come up with a plan.
They've had, they've had 30-plus days prior to this, they have another 30 days. It just would be nice if they would, you know...
Response or a plan.
Response of, hey, we want to do this, hey, we want help, you know, I mean, to be honest, the EDA's got a program for, for raising houses in town, that'll, that'll help them out. Chris has been talking, and Jeff was talking about all the, the funding options out there to help these people, but we can't just go apply for help for them. You know, they, they have to come forward with something, and the, these, well, there's five total, the one being 157 Third Street that you did three meetings ago, that we've had zero response from them with what their intentions are. So...
Thank you. I just wanted to be made clear to the public, this wasn't a haphazard.
The last thing I ever want to see is us tearing somebody's house down.
This is to get them serious about moving forward. That's clear and simple what it is.
And this is, these are the parameters, the guidelines, that the city attorney advised the council of, and that we move forward for on the 157 Third Street building, and we have to follow suit. We set a precedent, so we must follow it. So...
Thank you for all your work on that.
That's all I got.
Is there another, is there a fifth one, did you say?
The fifth one you've already done, that was the 157 Third that you...
We just have to vote on the last one.
Okay, so, did we get a first, second, and last one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, was there seven total, and then two of them actually responded?
Yeah, you'd be safe saying that, there's, and there's some that are minor that didn't, didn't elevate to this situation. It's kind of a deal where you need to make it safe, and these homes are not safe. So, they, property owner needs to make it safe, if they don't make it safe, the city needs to make it safe.
Okay, do we have any other new business? Any mayor council communication? Then, do we have a motion to...
Make a motion to go to closed session to discuss hiring of the EDA director.
I'll second that. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?